We still have. There, can you see us?
Is that better?
Hi.
No, can you hear us?
Yes, you all looking sound great.
Uh, we can't hear you. Okay. Why is this not a surprise? A plus, A plus zoom. And we hear each other, but not you. Yes, that's kind of the way of the world. Uh huh, I getcha. You're not, it's not working? Oh. That's, that's. I, I told Mike we had to have all the cords. He said, no, no, you only need this one.
What's up?
Yeah, no, uh huh, right.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
So.
Can you?
Really call ourselves to order and then we'll just keep trying to fix this. Um. Back for Whitney. This way behind goes down the stairs and outside this way goes through the library bathrooms are on the middle corner over there. Um. And additions and deletions to the posted agenda besides the lack of friends report.
Right, Ken, Tom.
Uh, greetings, everyone.
Oh, I hear you.
I can't see you, but.
No, wait a second. Well, I'm working on that.
Okay, okay.
Can you see me or you can't see me either?
No, I see a weird like kind of nineties.
You got your logo.
Yeah.
So, um, we have no public, so we don't need to do that. So now we get to do the fun things. Introduce Whitney. Oh my goodness, I am so sorry.
I did need to refer to my voice here. Uh, Whitney, can you introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Whitney Cruisinger. I am obviously new to this board, uh, but really extended the year. I lived in South Burlington for two years. All the time. Um, but yeah, we just decided to.
Alright, I would think the next motion is to go, next thing.
So I follow by.
And. Your turn, Holly.
Uh, can you turn me so I can look at Whitney?
You wanna look at Whitney?
I can't see her. So demanding. Hi, I'm Holly. Um, what are we saying? Just who we are?
Whatever you wanna say.
Okay, um, I'm Holly. I'm the chair of the communications committee. Um, I'm an English department at UVM and it's nice to meet you.
Thanks. And you're a poet and you know it. You didn't say that once.
No, that's for you to say.
Yeah, right.
Every time.
Um, hi, I'm Jennifer in the library and, um, I look forward to. Noticing you more often in the library.
We met, so excited to be here.
Hi, I'm Margie and, um. That's what we're saying, we're saying, Chair of the Governance and Nomination Committee and we're awesome. So if you're looking for a committee, you know, we do policy. Policy, I just, I never can make it sound more exciting than that. Yeah, we are, it is a lot of, so glad you're here, so I can join you.
I am Teresa, uh, I'm the UDS trustee, so thank you for taking my place.
Hi, Whitney, I'm Donna. Uh, I'm the secretary for the board. Someone usually say, who said that and who said second? Um, and, uh, I'm on the final committee spot.
I'm Ted Luntzky, I'm the treasurer and vice chair, as I got deferred to real quick. Um, I've been on board. Um, just re-upped this year, so I'm back again. Um, been in South Burlington since 2020.
I'm Kevin, uh. For two years now, is that right? Uh, and I'm on the finance committee.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sure you'll have thoughts or questions for everybody. We are available and I will send, we need to do an updated. Um, list of who we are. So once I think that, we'll send that out. So if you need to connect with anyone, you can. Easy. Uh, so next up, approval of our regular board minutes of June 13, 2024. Anyone have?
I want the motion to approve this.
Amazing.
I'm shocked, eh?
Okay, all, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are passed. Um, so I, they, oh, sorry, we're deleting library staff introduction, I forgot.
We don't have, uh, staff members, but what I wanna interject is I'm gonna send this around. These are flyers to hang up wherever you think you might go. And, uh, there you go.
Thank you, Jennifer. And now chairs report. I want to speak about a couple of things. One, thank you all for sending the email about events that you've attended. I know there's a couple more people that. Might be sending that. So far, our group has attended over fifteen events this year, which is pretty great. Uh, where it's really nice to see that we're here in the community representing the library and not just in the library, but. SB Night Out, Lumine, many other programs, Juneteenth, so really appreciate it and you and. I added you, don't worry. Um, so I really appreciate taking the time and coming out to represent. And then also there is an event that I think Jennifer will speak to August 22nd. There is a back to school event that.
As part of SB Night Out.
Thank you. And if anyone is interested in helping out with that, please email me and Jennifer so that we, um, our group together.
Were you raising your hand, Holly? Did I make it up?
No, I won't be here. I was not raising my, I was scratching my head.
Too many of them. Sorry, Jen. And also thank you for participating in the survey as part of Jennifer's review. We are surveying the trustees. The board of the friends as well as employees. So, um. I'm enjoying reading all of those great things and I might be setting up a time to meet with Jennifer in the very near future. About all of the wonderful things that she is doing. If you have not filled out the survey and you need another minute, I would be gone for the weekend. So you have a few more days for you to fill that out. Um. I also wanted to remind everybody of Catherine's retirement party on August 13th. I should have brought a card with me. I did not. So. I am going to find a card from all of the trustees. And if anyone is interested in joining me to purchase the small thing of flowers for Catherine, let me know so that we can have that. Um, I will probably be late to that. Ted is going to represent. I don't think there's a speaking thing, but it would be nice if people could join four to six.
Uh, some period. It's a.
Some period.
Family thing. Yeah, yeah. No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
No, I think, I think there'll be remarks around fourth of those. I'm more concerned that people just come when they can.
Beautiful, thank you. So we will work on doing that. Um, I also wanted to just talk to all of you. We don't have a policy. But now that I am thinking about it, uh, governance, we might want to put together a policy that really talks about trustees as a. As individuals should not be putting out any, um. Media or published source, including the other paper without a conversation when at least Jennifer and I. Um, in a perfect world, it would be something that we could bring to the board and show. We are all strong advocates for the library. I think. We have great things to say, but when you're putting something out in media, and I don't mean like book face, I mean something that has. Information about the library. We just wanna make sure that it's representing all of us. Because one person has an opinion may not be something that's for everyone. So, um. I'll talk to you about that later, but I just wanted to say as we're restarting the year, it's a good thing to talk about. That's. That's my chair report is, oh, actually I have one more thing. I'm so sorry. So Jennifer and I met with Jesse and, um, the lawyer attorney.
City manager.
City managers of Jesse Baker, city manager and the attorney Jared. I don't know his last name is, um, about the MOU. It was a, a very positive meeting. There will be another one. Uh, we are just doing some draft changes to that MOU right now. And then next month I will bring it to the committee and invite, or. To this committee and invite Jared and Jesse to come to the meeting. If, in case we have questions or thoughts about changes to the MOU. And though I have not reminded Jesse what the date is, but I will do that.
That's fine. I'm looking for Jared's last name. I feel badly that I don't.
I should know.
Pellerin.
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 Double L's.
Double L's.
Does anybody have any questions for me? And Whitney, always feel free to say. Eh? Um, and this is Lauren.
Hi.
Hi. I can't see myself.
Uh, Holly and Lauren, can you see us now?
I can see you. Yeah.
Hey, that's great. We didn't think it worked.
Oh, there we go.
Do you wanna tip it to Whitney so that Lauren can say aye?
Hi.
There's our new member, Whitney.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Hi.
We're glad you made it, Lauren.
Yeah, me too.
So next up is. Governance and nomination committee. And there is an extra thing that Jennifer needed to add on the action.
On the action.
For the computer use and internet policy.
Oh, okay. Do we fill out one?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's straightforward and it's just a matter of, yeah, the explaining it.
Yep.
On the policy, there it says. There's nothing. I can't see it. Um. There's something that talks about the limits and availability for the public. And what I realized when I was reading it is. So under, under A, it says desktop computers may be used for up to three hours. Um, so that statement needs to say desktop computers on the second floor. Da 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 da. And, um, we need to take out the COVID thing, although the version that I saw was.
Yeah, it's so.
Very big.
This is the wrong one.
Okay.
Sorry, keep talking about it because everybody was saying.
Well, that's fine. And then, um, of course, what we didn't have in this policy is we didn't have the children's room. So I think we basically need to copy and paste that another time underneath. And it'll say, um, in the Maribella Kid Space. There are three computers and those are, um, for a two hour maximum at thirty minute increments. So that's all. I just wanna add that so that it's in there. Cause I don't want people to go to the kids' room and say, well, what do you mean? I can't use it for three hours. I. Is that in a different policy than Maribella or for you? No, I, well, I mean, I suppose it might also be in the, I think it's here. Yeah. So I think we just. Couldn't we make a motion with edits? Yeah. That cover the changes and that Marjorie.
Yeah, definitely. Um, so the one, the change that we did highlight, um, has to do with mature material. We're very careful in crafting that because we didn't wanna call out pornography and we didn't wanna identify patrons, um, by age because as Jennifer pointed out, it's not necessarily. Um, we can have underage students, uh, patrons who may be accessing material in the children's room. That's a bit weird. And the other concern was to make sure that, um, we're banning it to, as always, so, um, so. I think we did a nice job of kind of threading that needle by allowing, well, not allowing, but saying like, you need to be upstairs out of the children's room when you're accessing, accessing mature material. Pornography. So that was kind of the problem.
Is there a, is there a definite, uh, is there a definition of mature material that we have? Is, is there one?
Know it when you see it.
Yeah, I know.
Just like there's not a definition for pornography.
Right.
I did, I didn't wanna make sure just if that could get challenged. Are, are we, we know how we're gonna navigate that.
Yeah. Yeah. Um. Well.
I, I will say this, like you, and.
No, please.
Jump in whenever, like you can't, like if there's one thing I've learned about being on this committee is you cannot anticipate every single event. So, so I think, uh, the chair material is the best way to thread that needle. And then if it gets challenged, it gets challenged and we'll deal with it as a common.
In the kids' space computer area, there, there is a specific sign. It's about pornography, first person shooter. And maybe a third thing that I can't think of. Um, so there are examples that are, you know, they, they have described those, they, but.
I'm sorry, that's right. It's also violent, um, material and gaming.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you're right, we could get caught. We could absolutely.
And I think it's that you have to get something out there and then you adjust as you.
It, and again, I think what's important too, um, because I hear Trina's voice, who's our, um, the, our privacy librarian, you know, who's like very anxious about who's.
Yeah.
I speak with her, so she, I don't speak, anyway. Um, my point is, is that we're not banning it, just saying you have to go upstairs. So access to the material, we're not, you know, it's. It's still available. So we're not shoving people out of the line with material at the top. Oh, yes, Holly.
Uh, I have a clarifying point about the, um, earlier thing that Jennifer said about creating a separate section about the kid's space. Um, the increments are not thirty. It's either fifteen or twenty.
Um, so much. Talking about the use, you said the.
The three, the three, um, computers that are like the, in the.
Big high ones?
The what?
Not the kid gaming ones, but the ones that are in the hangout.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Because they go to the internet. Those are the ones I'm more concerned about.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so I would like to put forward a motion and, um, that we accept these, that the board accept these changes with the proposed edits. Second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Any other discussion? You. Oh. Do you have anything?
No, that's okay. We're, well, I did have one other thing too. We're in Alabama because this is the, one of the other issues that we're looking on.
Go ahead.
And, um, we're looking on a policy for re- reconsideration of programming and it's going to be based on that reconsideration materials, but, um. It was something that we've been talking about. Jennifer suggested that we do that. So that's on tap for our next meeting.
Can you explain reconsideration? So it's not just, should we have this program and should we not? If somebody objects, right?
If somebody objects to the program, it's an appropriate, right, tax funded, um.
That they have a system.
Library that. Program, then we have a process by which they can, um, register the complaint, they can define it and we just like go from there. I'm not that clarified.
So our new comp squad chair, do you have anything to report on?
Uh, yeah, I'm the new comp squad chair. Uh. Yeah, we, um, so we didn't have a meeting in July. We had a, um, an informal get together, um, at a, at a local establishment. But we, um, uh, Rebecca and I did meet with, uh, Sue and Mira, uh, who are library staff. People, um, Whitney, um, and we talked about library card signup month, which is coming in September, cause you know, we're not busy enough in September. And, uh, so we brainstormed a number of ideas and things we might do. And I think Sue and Jennifer had a chat about this today and then Sue and I had a chat about it. Um, and so what we're going to try to do is have trustees do some tabling in the new developments on Market Street. And that's gonna be sort of like our test area this time around. Um, and we're contacting Al's to see if they would like to sponsor like a, get a new library card, get a recon. Considering these people are like right, right in their backyard. Um, and then we're discussing also, um, having some sort of drawing for those who get new library cards. Um, so we will be in touch with you all once we, we're meeting next week, um, have more concrete plans for all of this. That's the main thing we're working on.
Thanks, Holly. Next up, Ted.
Um, annual, I guess, the, um. Operating budget for the city in the year. So, on the other side, if you flip it over real quick, you see total spend. A budget of all, like, four, oh, four, five million, actually it's got one, three, four, six. So we're in sixteen hundred dollars, so very, very good.
Very good.
Yeah, when you break down the, I'm gonna tell you, the top half is, is the salary benefits, all the other stuff. That was, um, negative nine thousand dollars. Overall, so the costs to, um, support the staff were high, but that's across the board. Actually, that wasn't our expenditure, except that. And then when you look at the maintenance line, which is two thirds of the way down, that, that did get registered, that were credited ten. So when you look at the total spend that we controlled, we're actually almost exactly on. So, right. Again, I think it just shows we had the tune of what we forecast and we budget, we have a good pace of it, it shows credibility to the city. Um, so it allows us, when we ask for something, they know that they give it to, they know where to spend it and they have a reason. So that's really good. Lots of puts and takes when you start balancing out this one. Jennifer, I think you talked through a lot in here is, you know, sometimes we're spending more on the copier or less on the copier. We're spending more on, uh, adult DVDs.
I'll send these to you, Holly and Lauren. I'm sorry, we, we had a.
Yeah, we had.
Staff who.
Yeah, I apologize. So the, in, in the ins and outs, different buckets, but it all netted out to be the same. Uh, so I think every year we'll look at this to see if there's any rebalancing or trends that we're seeing for that stuff. Jennifer, I think you. Maybe a couple of comments you had in here about.
Yeah, so the, the document is what I give to the city before the end. So, um, I will say though that, uh, I, I appreciate the, um, the applause. However. There, um, this budget should have been almost eleven thousand dollars over because the city had surplus and they agreed to pay for shades. Which are on, under, um, repair and maintenance. And in fact, we only, we weren't over as much as we could have been. So. We still were underspent by eight thousand dollars or so. And some of that is, um. You know, some of it is just, you do what you can when you're spending. I think some of it was, we had an employee who ended up retiring and they were not really actively engaged as much in purchasing for their collections as I, um. Had hoped and almost always they end up to the penny at the end of the year, but this year they did not. Um, so that's, that's the, the big thing. And then, um. We have to talk to IT about our budget for computer software, like, because we spend our hardware, we spend our program fees. But we just, we're not buying a lot of software. And so I think I need to, we need to figure out exactly what that is supposed to be. Because if it's really about computer programs that were, not programs, um, if it's about online subscriptions, you know, then let's just push it over into online subscriptions. Uh, so last year was the same. It was also underspent. So those are, those are a couple of things that's, well, yeah, we gotta figure out what that is.
And it doesn't mean things like Microsoft Office and.
Well, no, that's under program fees.
Okay.
Yeah, see, that's the thing. So I think that we, I don't know if it's leftover from a long time ago or what the story is, but I think that. I just don't think it's the right term. So I look at where am I gonna spend something and I think, well, that's not software. I think the last time we, you know, the only time we actually spend software money is, um. In the recording studio, then we are buying software for that computer. And then, um, because we started doing Wednesday night gaming in the kids' room. I said, okay, we can use software money for the games that we buy. But even so, it's, so anyway, those are just, those are the two, uh, biggies that jump out at me, the three things. And obviously, our conference room aren't bringing a lot of that, so.
Yeah, that's the other one. On the revenue side, we look at the revenue side, we look at the bottom end of the second page, there's a lot of money coming in with the cultures. Compared to what we're discussing, coming in from, coming from rentals, coming from property fees, people that was where, there. So the, the copier fees came in as well. We. Is there anything more we need to discuss on copy fees and stuff like that?
So, um, I don't, yeah, that would be in here. I think I put it in my report that we're behind in, in making that happen. Um. I talked, I did talk to some of the facilities today about what we need them to do so that we have a secure box for money. Um, and then I'm also talking to. IT who handles the copiers and printers and saying, let's, you know, we, we. I opted not to get a new copier when we moved in. It's like, it's not broken, I'll get rid of it. But I'm having some difficulty with them as far as. Numbers and why, why does it cost so much? And how is it possible that we're, you know, making twenty-two hundred copies of everybody or things like that that just don't make sense? Um, and so I'm thinking since we're doing this thing about payment anyway, um, this would be a good time to just set that aside and, um, have the all, I'm the, on the whole. Library, the whole building will be, um, we're the last holdouts for, um, for a different vendor than Simples. So that will also be happening. And then we'll. Set aside the coin op box. Um, we're gonna keep it for a while just to see. Uh, and then, um. Keeping that out, you know, later on if we think we have to start charging more aggressively than. Take that back out, but right now we won't. Once this starts, so coming that way.
Okay.
Excellent. Do we need to make a motion to approve this? Are we good?
That's, that is city documents.
Oh, good then.
No, it already is.
Sorry, John, it's not really an action.
No.
Delete.
Okay, so next, and hopefully Ann, I'm not putting you on the spot. Okay, great. Next up is Ann.
No. Yeah, so the, the Sound Bronx and Library Foundation, a separate entity from this group here. It's like the Friends are a separate entity, the Foundation is, and the Miras Group. So we, we reorganized, we in kind of a larger sense, meaning a lot of people reorganized the foundation recently. And. And the, um, the bylaws say that the foundation needs to present a slate of its board of directors to this group. To, to be voted on. And it's, of tax reasons, we, it's a support, the foundation is a supporting organization for the library. And so we need to have some kind of connection. And that is, that's what we decided this is how the connection is gonna be. And we want to designate me. Um, on the trustees from the foundation, that is me. Um, and so Stacy's, um, a, the proposed slate. A couple of copies if anybody. Look at it. So, um, we are asked, we, the foundation are asking this group to approve this slate of. Directors. There are a few overlaps on proceeds and the foundation board, the proposal, Donna, Holly, Kevin, Ted, and myself. Um. And I'm the proposed designee. We have a vacant seat. Leave that in the list, I think. And, uh, so I would.
We're just approving the board, the foundation officers.
The th- foundation officers, yes. And I'm gonna ask for a motion because I think I'm speaking as a member of the foundation. And so I'm not gonna make a motion. I'm gonna ask, I'm making. And I'm gonna ask for a motion, because I think I'm speaking as a member of the foundation, and so I'm not gonna make a motion, I'm gonna ask, I'm making a sacrifice. Somebody, motion to approve the proposed slate of South Burlington Library Foundation.
I motion to approve the South Burlington Foundation Library.
Holly seconds.
Alright. So all of the favor, please say ah. Great, and then Anne, just so people know, so Penny is the president.
Yes.
Ted is the treasurer. You are the secretary.
And Penrose is the vice president.
Vice president, okay.
And this is all, we learned in law school, non pro tank, so it goes back to July first, because that's when. That's when the uh the fiscal year started, and so this is we're approving this after that, what we're gonna.
Right, thank you. Even though I still have to do things until we just made this vote.
Oh, no, that's true.
They're white police.
Thank you, Anne, uh, now it's Jennifer, your director's report.
So, um. I uh. Yeah, thank you, um, sorry about putting all that in the body of an email, but I um. Wasn't, I was at the doctor's waiting room and that was the way it could get done, so I did it. Um, although I need to copy it, make sure I keep it. Um, so that pretty much says everything that I wanted to say, um, I have one topic that's kind of an addition. At least for conversation, I don't know if this could, well. But um. So you all especially, because we're in this room where, sorry, the AV doesn't work. And hasn't worked for months, know that there is a problem in building with the AV. Um, it was um. There are lots of problems with it, but one of the things that happened, which they put on the AV and they had everything connected into the room. That is the uh the back room of the auditorium. So instead of having like separate servers and separate areas, so that that's one key issue, but there are other issues. So um, Nick and IT and I found a um, a different company that services. Uh, the Creston panels that we use outside of the rooms to say when they're occupied or have been reserved, and um, so. Ready to to move to a different organization to 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 be able to monitor that and help us um with troubleshooting. But first, we have to split out the. Well, what we first need to do is configure. Uh, network switches, furnish, configure, install and test managed switches. Replace unmanned port switches, furnish and install approved networks. That all has to happen before these other people are willing to touch us, because it's such a mess. So, um, IT sent me a message not too long ago saying um, that this is gonna happen. That it costs almost nine thousand dollars, and Nick wondered if maybe the library could help pay for it. So, um, I I I have, I'm gonna.
So we would like to discuss.
Let's see, see if anybody has any thoughts on that topic.
I just like wonder, our word seems to indicate, we're not a lot of options here, like the the choices for the library, not like, the library has to.
Well, I'm curious. I'm curi- so I guess he's thinking that it would come out of an IT budget, but of course it will have an IT budget. Um, if, if I say no, absolutely, the library's not gonna pay for that, are you crazy? Um, then I don't know what happens, I I presume that they would go to the city manager and say. You know, we gotta find a way to pay this, and they have some kind of a surplus or some kind of a a fund to do that stuff. But I don't, um, we didn't talk about what if, what if the library said no, um.
Jennifer, um, of all these configure network switches and change all of that good stuff. How many other departments within the city are affected by this stuff not working well?
So I I would say every, uh, everybody who does meetings is affected. On the third, third floor, doesn't seem, one of their rooms doesn't seem to have any trouble, and you know, it varies from room to room. Um, the the biggest. Affect is when things don't work in the auditorium, although right now they are, so they put Band-Aids on it. Um, and then when the auditorium's not working, of course, that's city, that's the um city council meeting and the development review board and all those kinds of things. So I think all the committees and all the staff in the whole building are affected. We are just one of, of several, it's just that we have. We control this room and we control the auditorium. They're both library rooms, so I think that's where he's coming from, it's what. They are library, you know, they're part of the library, so that's I think why he was asking, but yeah, they're used by everybody.
Some of those fees come to the library.
Well, so it, they have not so far, so in all the try, in all the Band-Aiding and trying to figure out what's wrong and. Um, those fees have not come to the library, they've gone to IT. And um, that might be part of the. You know, it's one of those things, I'm just mean to ask, because I don't want to, you know, I don't wanna like say, oh, well, maybe. Well, maybe we should, you know, do such and such to pay for that instead of doing it ourselves, but, but um, so far, it has not been charged to the library budget.
Is this gonna fix the problems? Because that's my big question, is this gonna fix anything?
Or is it just to get the new vendor? Um, uh, this isn't gonna fix that. Uh, I think this is gonna set the stage so that we can um fix that, but this is the hardware piece of it. And then we're gonna get somebody else into, yeah.
So you have a best ring on return?
It it, to me, I think the issue is, I think it needs done.
Yeah, does.
And the 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 functionality of what we built here is getting an impression that it's probably not very functional, because it doesn't work. And I'll think that's.
It's unreliable, that's for sure.
Right, and I don't think that's something as an advocate, as a board, we should continue to know about, knowing about it and not trying to do something about it. I would feel that that should be a city's responsibility, because it's a city.
Yeah.
So, in in the grand scheme of things, I think it comes out of the city taxpayers' coffers. That if we need to pay for it to move it, our budget comes out of the taxpayers, we ought to do that, now, we're taking it upon ourselves to make that decision if we cannot. But for us as a library board, to make this library function and work to the standard we want, we should do this. I would push back to say, hey, the city ought to fess this one up because of the impact, but push comes to shove. Since I know it comes into this, it's gonna come out of the city coffers anyway, if we can do it, we should do it. That's my first guess.
Um, I just wanna know, like, what's the precedent, who paid for the system to go in in the first place?
Sure, the capital for most of all.
Yeah, so the capital for the building paid for it, and. The foundation's money that they gave to the city, they gave in for lump sums to the city. So it isn't that our, that the, that the foundation's money paid for this room and the city's money paid for that room. The money went to the city and then the city paid for the whole thing.
Okay, so to clarify, there was a lot of money that the foundation contributed to, but the library's budget did not contribute to. And that's what originally paid for the original system, right?
It was, it was a small part of it, of the whole building, yeah, yes.
Gotcha, I just wanna understand what what would happen.
Yeah, yeah, it was all paid for by the city.
But I don't think I understood, who is gonna perform that, the the IT that worked the nine thousand dollar work, the rest of the.
It's such a good shit, yeah, so, um. Well, no, see, that's the problem, the problem is, we have, so this is. We have to go back to the people who did it wrong, to make them do it right, but it's not under warranty anymore, so we have to pay them.
No.
To do it right, so that we can stop working with them, which is, it's all, I mean, yeah, it's just, it's so messy. And, you know, when they say, well, can the library help pay for it? Well, let's see, here's the budget. Um, no, I mean, you know, well, I can, I can take twenty dollars from this line, oh, I can use that computer software line for you. You know, okay, we can agree to put twenty five hundred dollars toward it. You know, okay, and so I'm having trouble spending that anyway, but really, otherwise, there's not a lot of fat in this budget. And we certainly are not going to be using foundation money, because it is a capital problem in this league, right? Yeah.
Um, so the city owns that contract, right? With the existing system?
There's no contract.
Okay. So is it provided for or is it?
It was installed and it does not stand, but there's no warranty.
There's no contract.
So we we have to put dollars.
So if there's no contract, what, why does the city have to go back to the original installer?
To get out of it.
My understanding is that. Um, not very many. AV companies are working with Creston and that they made such a raps. It's ridiculous, it's, because it sounds to me like they made such a rastiness of it. That they are the only people who would be, who would be willing to take it apart, that anybody else is like, ooh, not touching that, but it turns to gold. That that is my sense, but I can get, I can get more details on this.
But then again, last year, why shouldn't like do each other that they can actually fix it?
That is a problem.
And who will, if we were uh to contribute money with library, it's been as well. Once it's been seen.
So I'm already, so, um, and I. I don't think that we have any legal stake, because we're all the city, but um. IT and I have already determined who we want, they're local, they're, it's easy to get them here.
Remember.
They have experience, I'm sorry, did I?
Oh, no, I mean, remember we're being recorded, so you don't wanna say the name, don't say it.
No, no, I'm not saying the name, so we've already, you know, we've already given some input about that, but um, I don't know that. Putting money from our budget back into a different line in the city gives us any more of a control.
Thank you, how much of the nine thousand do they need?
They did not ask for a specific amount.
I like the dollar amount that sits in the budget line, you don't know how to spend.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in fact, that we're, you know, maybe we should offer something that basically be like, we don't have, we don't have all that, and no, fine. That's my case. But we have to advocate that it's a critical thing as a library board, we have to advocate, this needs to be fixed, and and if it pushes down to shove, the city just. I mean, it's gonna come out of there.
Right.
And that's why we can't get overspend our budget, that's just gonna come back to the city. That's, that's why I think it'll end up over there, and it should end up over there as a center line, but we should really advocate that. It is not in the interest of our interest of the library that it's key to, right, right, I would agree.
Anne, what do you think?
Is this something that we could discuss in the context of? With the city manager? Does that, that is sort of, what's the relationship between the library?
That's a good point.
Even not specifically this time, but I know they're trying, they want a certain thing, but I don't know if this is. It seems to be a part of the question, what is the relationship? The library and the city, but.
That is a good point we didn't talk about, because we're in the building.
Right.
So. I think I'm hearing yes, but. Uh, or yes, Anne.
Wait, Holly's got something.
Oh, go ahead, Holly.
Oh, I actually, I wanted to ask Anne as our resident lawyer. Um, I know that the law is large and it is not your area, um, it sounds like they, it sounds like they did a really poor job on their job. Um, and also that that's not really what warranty is supposed to be for, and so the fact that this is out of warranty is unrelated to the fact that they messed this up. Is this something that someone with a special letters after their name could write them a letter?
I know, I thought, I thought about that too, I thought, is there a warranty of the, like, a warranty of usability or something that just automatically comes with it? But how many years ago, right, for you?
It hasn't been that long. I mean, which is, I really like it to some point.
I can certainly, I can certainly uh talk to Nick or or, a couple of us could talk to Nick to find out. And why can't some, I mean, because it's certainly, as we have proceeded with this problem. Right. The question of, well, why aren't they responsible, I I don't know, but it it seems to me that that's the answer, but I don't know what's the answer else.
Not all unfairnesses. Are so long. But I I, I thought, I mean, I thought the same thing, but I don't. Yeah, I think it depends on what they contracted to do. Whether, yeah, what the agreement was at the beginning, well, we could have asked the, the city.
There was a contract with them, it could be possible that this is what we, this is what was, this is what we wanted and it was bad.
Right.
You know, or this is what we got and it was bad, and we didn't know it at the time. Well, but we could have the other way, we could have signed off on it to to type the check. You see, if we thought it was good, it checked out, but it didn't make that.
I would think IT would have an understanding of that, but it seems like they've already moved on to the, or we have to pay them again anyway, you know.
Well, um, let's see, so there was an inherent. Uh, challenge with the EV system, because when the RFPs went out for the design. One company won that bid, and they designed the system. And then, um, an RFP went out to put the system in place. And. Another company was selected, so it wasn't their design, but they were hired to do it, now that's still, you shouldn't, I mean, you know, don't bid on it if you can't do it. Um, the other thing is that. Um, when you're talking about what IT should know, one would hope that there's some kind of a file or, you know. But there, this is the third IT director we've had since uh the selection of the, you know, since the start of the work, so.
But that is me. Yeah, and I know this doesn't matter, but I'm just kinda curious, like, is that pretty typical to have them design a water?
It's not typical, it's um, you know, it's value engineering. You know, you only have this much money, you only have this much money, you only have this much money, and so the person who's making the selection is like. Oh, hell, what do we do, what do we do, oh, so it it is not typical, I don't think.
So I think for.
And and the word value engineering just tells you exactly where we were, yeah. Yeah. And it's beautiful space.
Yes, yeah, 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 I'm glad, I'm just seeing that, so I'm like.
Absolutely.
This is possible. So I I, I think we could spend a lot of time doing what we all just talked about, but I think the bed that we are in is where we are right now, and. I don't wanna spend Jennifer's time or IT's time having us go back in, and. Yeah. Has there been a response from the city in terms of compensation for the city, like, you give us this much, we'll.
No, they're not asking for a certain amount, he's just asking can we help? From our, and presumably from our budget, and no one was saying, no one, I mean, he doesn't know our finances to know.
Right.
Where our funds might come from or anything like that.
So, so what would be the best way forward then, like, does we need to do it?
The the city has to pay for it eventually, so maybe we'll be going to the city leadership and saying, this is fine. City council reviews POs and Jesse does her thing, and the city pays for it, and they pay our pockets, they go ahead.
So you're not necessarily.
But if they don't approve that, we need to advocate for it, to say, this is the reason to do it, and I think we need to get to that next step to see if we can put.
Okay, so I guess the question is how does that happen, because you're not advocating that we change the, mess with our budget to make this possible.
I'm saying that if we are going to say yes, that um coincidentally, we have this twenty five hundred. Or, you know, maybe you guys spend five, what are they spending that line, but. or, you know, maybe I spend five, what did I spend in that line, but um, you know, two thousand or twenty five hundred dollar line that I just happened to talk about is not quite knowing, you know, what it's for and it's underspent. So I didn't come into the room thinking, let's use that, but in the room while I'm talking about it, it's like, well, we could say.
I I don't think you're there yet.
Okay.
I think the answer, you put twenty five hundred, they still gotta spend that.
This city. Yeah.
The city.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I would say the city, you've gotta spend some money.
Uh-huh.
How do you wanna spend it? And if they come and say, well, we have a call for here, an arpa fund sitting over here, or this, or this.
Yeah.
And they come and say, you know, we we can cover this, we give you, maybe bring up twenty five hundred here, the city's still gotta pay it up. If we put twenty five hundred, we're still nowhere near getting done, of course.
Oh, it's gonna get done, right?
Yeah.
Right? I don't think there's any question that that everyone knows, everyone agrees it wants to be done.
Right.
So I hear you. So we could say no, and it'll probably get done. Uh or we can say, yes, this is, you know, we understand that it, we have a strong interest, vested interest in this book game and we could say, but all we can do is this.
To me, to me, almost, this is an accounting decision of the city, it's like, what bucket do you wanna put it in there?
Yeah.
They look at our lines and say, hey, the library's got part of this and they got twenty five hundred sitting in here.
Yeah.
Put it there, it's not us to do, all we say, we advocate, I don't, this needs to get done by the city. Do it. And if they stumble and say they're not doing it. And they say do it, they'll figure out what bucket to put it.
And this is just.
So they have the answer in the top part.
Yeah, and this is just the first step, 'cause once, if there's another
Right, well, so then, yeah, the next thing would be, which we didn't do, which I think was oversight maybe with this group, is we did not contract with them to do um maintenance or annual check updates, um that kind of thing. So but I, I think because that's an annual fee, that the expectation is that that will be put into and come out of the I T budget.
So would you find it helpful at this point to have someone from this group in the conversations with you to say, we advocate for this? Um or do you feel having these conversations with I T?
Well, yeah, it's a good question, because for me to have the conversation with I T, I don't know where he's getting the question from. You know, did Jesse say to him, well, why don't you talk to the library, or did he just come out of his own, say, and look at his own budget and say, well, I don't have money. So.
But they get to next conversation, it's like, do you think the city isn't, is not gonna cover unless we do?
Yeah.
And if we do, it's still city money.
Right, right, right.
And and we have, we're very quick with foundation.
Right, right, right.
Not a foundation discussion, but I don't think the city ought to look as if that's paying.
Right, yeah.
And they're gonna sweep the money, they swept the money already, so it's it's bucket to bucket, it's either our bucket or somebody else's bucket, but they're just gonna pick the bucket.
Right, right.
What we're saying is, we should do this.
Yeah.
And if you wanna take some money from our bucket?
Yes, here's what we have.
Here's what we have and.
If you wanna take it all, we'll explain it all.
Yeah, but we can't do that. Right, yeah.
Okay.
So I think there's that. I think they know the library has a, other sources of money.
Yeah.
Well, if it's coming from someone outside of Nick, that's possible. Nick himself?
Yes.
Uh I'm, why would you ever know?
And that, that could be the issue, you have to have a conversation with Jesse.
Yeah.
Are you having this one?
No. Okay, alright, so I think that I know what we're doing, I don't know quite what the minutes are gonna show, except that I'm gonna go back to Nick and just try to have a conversation about what what he's thinking or what he's hearing about it. And um then if need be, I or some collection of we can um just go talk to the city manager or the deputy city manager about it, try to figure out. To have that conversation about buckets, otherwise, so otherwise, my minutes, my report came to you already, do you have any questions or thoughts or? Sorry, that took so long, it was just brand new, so I didn't have the chance to.
It's okay, it's good to talk about, be great to have this room fixed. Thank you. Any other business for this group? Uh Holly, sorry, Holly, I turned my head.
Okay, I have two things. Um one is you were gonna talk about the um back to school night.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And what's the second thing?
Sorry, yeah, next?
Oh, the second one is, are we gonna do the pride parade this year?
What, do the what?
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you for both of those. Um pride, are we doing the parade?
I didn't hear that.
So first of all, the back to school thing, so I was only, we were just invited to participate yesterday. And all I know is that um I've said yes, so I put it on my schedule to go if if we don't have anyone else to go or with somebody else. Um we're gonna have a, it's the twenty second of August, September?
Is that running tonight out?
Yeah, is that a Thursday? Okay, so I think it's August twenty second. They um they are, the rec department has, is doing this and that, they're pulling together supplies for people for app, you know, like donations of supplies. And they have different committees who are gonna be there and all of us are supposed to do something that's kind of um, that's interactive for the kids. So I said, well, we'll look for a craft or an activity and then we'll, we'll certainly bring the spinning wheel, 'cause that's so popular.
Love that.
Um so that's all I, that's what I know about it, Holly. Does that help?
Um yeah, you just said you wanted to talk about it, so I was just reminding you.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you, yeah, I mean, that's it, I wanna tell you that. Um pride parade, so good question. Um until two days ago, I wasn't sure that there, that we were gonna do anything for the, or or I was gonna just suggest that maybe a couple of us go and carry the banner, but we don't do a big deal. Uh because Sue, who is in the new position, in her new position, and so is basically now doing two jobs at once, seemed a little overworked to me and she was the one that was supposed to be working on the um, the book cart. Um the book cart. What am I trying to say?
It's not a dance, but it's.
No, yeah, no.
Pulling out a knee.
Yeah, the the book cart drill team. So that is Sue's interest in doing that. I know, and she's looking for people who wanna commit to, uh you know, probably one rehearsal and then getting out there doing the book. So she came back from a leadership conference totally jazzed and said now that she has time. So it's good, send up to the conferences. So I have not signed up to be in the, in the parade, but at this point, um that's a good question and I imagine that the city wants to be in the parade with us again, um even though it was very not well attended, but. So that's where we stand with that, and if you are interested in being part of the book cart drill team, then um.
Other triads.
Anyone can do it. Yeah, I know, it's September, do you have a date, Holly?
Uh it's um the eighth.
The eighth?
The eighth.
Oh, I better get going.
Sunday? Is that not right? I think it's the eighth. I have it on my calendar for the eighth.
It was a Sunday last year.
The students are back.
Okay.
So thank you for asking, 'cause I.
And if we don't want to be part of the drill team, but we want to like carry a banner or something, some of us can walk, right?
Yes, yes. Of course, of course. I am not doing the drill team, I can guarantee you, because I fall off of machines in the gym. So I'm certainly not gonna be spinning around with it.
And since I've been Holly for the last pride parade, uh I'll hand out a Pepsi to get the take a look in the book t-shirt.
So um hold off on that for one minute, because last year Jesse said, we should all have t-shirts as if she wanted to make that happen. And if Jesse wants to make t-shirts happen, we're ready, but it would be city, you know, it would be city itself Burlington, right? Question. I think that comes from publicity.
Security, the library's closing in thirty minutes after their exam. As a reminder, we stop making to the library, our fifteen minutes is working. Computers there and the pressure also close about fifteen minutes is working.
So um.
Is there anything you can still send out?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay, go ahead and send it out, but just be aware, there might be some other issues.
T-shirts are good.
Yeah. So um yeah, so I.
Any other business?
Yeah.
You'll be there.
Are you journeying?
I am a journey.
Alright, good job.
Thank you for your first meeting. You better, Holly, or I'll text you.
Everybody.
Well, if I can go to the um somewhere and put it out.
Okay, great, great.
When you leave our.
That'll be good, I'm willing.
Please, I can put it in now, no, no.
Um so, I'll give, yeah, would you do any handout or show up?
But somehow I don't think.
I think you just need to show up and what I am clear about is bye, see you soon.
See you.
Is whether we have like some craft kits that maybe come past things that we've been displaying or if we have to um do something, but.
The spinning wheel is really fun, I think we just give these to you questions.
Yeah, we obviously, well, this is, and this is targeting kids, 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 young kids, so.
And think of um new Americans.
Okay.
What would be some of our questions?
Okay.
Yeah, we have like a group of new Americans.
A lot of people are like, I just asked what their favorite book was and then they would go, yeah.
Yeah. I know, right?
And can you do news and stuff?
So that might be the thing, Whitney, is that you might be.
I would say.
Meeting hours.
Yes, we'd all go.